Welcome to the town manliest, I'm Warren. Eight point seven five, we are two percent and online in the hybrid. The first item is the approval of the minutes from our office twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting. Anyone have any questions or comments? It should be by bridge, sent by Arnie for approval of the minutes, all on finger. And your code?
Assume.
At the same time. Alright, motion carries, minutes are approved. On the next item on our agenda is the hybrid, the hybrid senior living property LLC for the hybrid senior apartments on Hybridge Street in Vanville. This is on for discussion only, exact number zero nine three point dash zero one dash zero five point one. So, I know we've got people in the rooms for the discussion. I think we want to definitely discuss items that are engineered as we responded with. Talk about the easements that we've received. And we do have a document that the planning board members just received that came in from the attorney, Chris Danaher, sorry. For discussion on that type of covenant document that we were talking about for the definition of seniors and some of the requirements for the housing. So I would like to start, I think we just kind of go through Doug's list, I think. Doug, do you mind?
Yeah, that's fine.
I've seen some of the comments, we also have your, I guess I mean your response that you shared with the board or in response to the public hearing comments.
Yep.
So, we'll have to go through that and then obviously if anyone in the board had any additions or comments that I felt to cover.
So, I sent out to the board comments from Mr. Gray's correspondence of his plan. And I've also been contacted by the highway superintendent. The town of Manlius, Mr. Gray went and visited him and shared the same letter with him and the supervisor, so I've coordinated with the supervisor and the highway superintendent. Doing right down the list, the traffic study, if you recall, last meeting when we looked at it, the traffic study was for the original project. But since then, GTS Consulting sent an updated study dated August twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. And the findings from GTS indicate no mitigation measures required and no further analysis related. The fire safety memo that Anthony shared with us at the last meeting has the signature of Chief Hildreth on it. So, like Anthony told us, he's in concurrence with everything that he and Anthony went over. So, he should be all set there. There was a question from Mr. Gray about wastewater approvals. And there's a correspondence dated December twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. WAP gives an approval or connection to the system. There is one contingency that prior to any final connections, that they have to have offset plan for two to one to be coordinated with WAP. There was a question that Mr. Gray had at the driveway. And in talking to the highway superintendent and the supervisor, they even informed me that the town board's determined a desire to accept the dedication of Grand Seaside Circle as a public road. However, as a condition, the uppour to the road will need to be town specification, as the applicant had told us he would. And the work needs to be certified and observed under the direction of the highway superintendent. So, that's everything that they told us at the last meeting. There was a, there was a concern by Mr. Gray about a national grid right away. Now, that right away is on the far southern reaches of the abandoned quarry. I reached out several times to Pam Aspinall, I've left her voice messages. My last correspondence to her, two and a half weeks ago, gave an overview of the project and a link to the town of Manlius repository. And I asked her to get in touch with me if she had any questions or concerns. And I have not received anything back. There is no work being done in this area. Yep, it's several hundred feet away. So, my, my opinion is that there's no, there's no impact for the national grid right away, and it's confirmed by Ms. Aspenhouse's responsiveness. Slope stability, quarry stabilization. I think at, at the last meeting, I think the Beardsley group gave a fine overview of slope stability for the site. So, the, you know, the applicant has completed a slope stability analysis with documentation from Beardsley, with technical input from CME doing borings and whatnot. Through the professional engineers. And they have presented findings to the planning board at our last meeting. And the findings indicate no increased impacts to the slope stability of the site from the proposed project. So, those were the questions that came up. My understanding is that the climbing stone ramp is a consent. So, there's got to be a two to one offset plan. And their, their most likely has to be coordination with WAP and the applicant's engineer to find out what projects they would, with it, they would do to do that. Now, the other thing is, the town of Manlius has turned all their sewers over to WAP. Right, so it's, you know, the whole thing now. No, I, I think it does, I mean, having been out there, having this project with several different applicants over the years, that slope, we've seen this from, from other professionals that have looked at that. The slope appears to be generally stayed, right, I mean, for all of us who've been around here for the last sixty years, that quarry has pretty much stayed the same. Or when you go out there, just, just like the gentleman from Beardsley said, from time to time, you'll see a rock or a boulder rolling down the hill. So, I believe what they're trying to address in SWIP on an annual basis, they will go in and see if there's any impacts to the stormwater areas from rocks and whatnot coming down the slope. And that includes that area behind that rigging. Does that make any sense? I, I don't, I don't think they're saying up on the slope. I believe they're saying stormwater areas. Yes. Yeah, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't, maybe the applicant could speak to this, but I don't believe anybody's going up on the slope. If anything potentially comes down, whether it's silk or stone or rocks that impact the stormwater.
We have two section details, one where the sheet plow wall not only comes down to the ground, but it exceeds above the ground for a distance of three feet, three and a half feet. So, any debris that goes down to the bottom of the hill and reduces that, that three foot depth, that's part of the SWIP inspection because on a yearly basis, some will
SWIP says hillside should be cleared of debris and excess stone. Which is a different, it's sort of Is it useful language?
Well, during
Is that helpful or not?
I think it needs to be clarified, Scott, because I don't think it's hillside.
Yeah, we refer to, we can refer to details where it's clear, the bottom of the hill where it and the other point is, there's a contract limit line, which the contractor will be responsible for not disturbing the hillside. So, so nobody, nobody under first thing we will do is stake out a
I go outside and I hear where hillside, hillside means slope. So, having this in the SWIP
Yeah, well, the intent was not, so some clarification words in there.
What did you mention about the traffic study?
The traffic study that we had on file was for the original project.
Right, important on the board.
I believe so, yeah. So, we had discussed last meeting that the traffic study needed to be updated in advance, so.
Okay, so we're going to talk about the easements and the covenant stuff. Does anyone have any other comments or questions about the project in general before we talk about easements and the covenant? So, just want to give some brief overview of the easement that you sent in. Please.
Sure. So, bits that I provided that are, again, they're being reviewed by Brookdale's attorneys currently. So, they are subject to any comments they may have. But essentially, there is a, I don't know, when should we finish? As I discussed in the last meeting, there is a sidewalk that they already, it's been reviewed by Brookdale. Is there's a sidewalk that runs outside the right away of the road and runs parallel to High Bridge that brings a sidewalk from essentially the entrance into the site all the way to Dartmoor. So, that is a sidewalk easement that we are going to be given by Brookdale. And it will be constructed and maintained by us as owner of the adjacent parcel. We've also, and that was previously reviewed by Brookdale. The second thing, once there is a small side sidewalk area in, I call it the interior part of the site that we are asking in Brookdale, that's an issue with, is to connect and build a small portion of the sidewalk on Brookdale's property to create connectivity between their existing sidewalk and the sidewalk we are, we are proposing on the site. That has, and then we would construct that as well. And also, the sidewalk document that is, that has been, has been presented to you allows for connectivity between the sites, Brookdale and ours and to share access and rights over the, over the sidewalks that exist on each property. So, they have the ability to come on our property and walk on our sidewalks. And we have the same over their side. Those connectivity between sites. This will maintain the site. We maintain the sidewalk that will be built on High Bridge. We will make, other than that, we will maintain the sidewalks on top of
It can be long, I think, I think hybrid particularly.
We anticipate that. I think I drafted that they would take care of it, it's not a very large area. It's deep under, but we've switched that. Objection, no objection.
So, I, so I've reviewed them, they're in good shape. There's only one thing I'd like to add about each of those easements, which I'll, I'll send you the language that, that the easements run to the benefit of the town and get modified and changed, but they're part of the site then.
Which I did believe, I did give the town the right to step in for this storm. Okay, yeah, wait, they, they want them from. Yeah, so that, I, I said this in the last meeting, I always thought that the issue, the biggest issue with Brookdale would be, and we're talking sidewalk, Brookdale would be the sidewalk on High Bridge, they've already signed it. As to the connectivity, I don't know why it would make true that is a new concept. I don't know why it have to be us walking on their sidewalk. And also there's, especially when we're offering apartments to, to the residents, or the family of the residents. I don't Yeah, because those are not signed, I didn't give you what was signed, which included in what was signed is their agreement that they ran the Seaside. And then the other side, the other agreement is the storm law. So, right now, there is a easement over a little portion of our property for the benefit of the town for their storm water. So, what we would envision is that that easement will be terminated by the town. And we will then have shared stormwater with that. We're going to, essentially, our system will go further. And I can't envision they're going to have any issues with this because we're agreeing to do all the work and we're agreeing to maintain their, all the system except for them mowing their grass. Because this doesn't have much standing water if it's all on their, on their stormwater. So, what we proposed is, you don't even have to maintain our system, we're going to do it for you. And any real construction work, it's got, it's probably better than this. Any construction work for the stormwater is pretty much going to be on our property. Right?
None, yeah, we're not
We're not going to really touch the system that is there. So yeah, I can't envision that that is.
Other question, just one, has there been any discussion to either prioritize or, or to change? Is there any type of bond or security or something that's going to be put in place to make sure that in fact, your client does take care of these things?
I haven't had any discussion with the town. But the town has the ability and yet provide inspections and bring the calls for that. And the town has the right to come in and cure any defects that could see not work. We're talking then over a period over the turn or over the life of the system?
Yep. And then we build back to the old
You're going to blame the problems or something? I, I, I think it's, I, I think having a bond or that's a period of time, so.
Well, it's a problem, easements that have where there's stormwater that runs through the, has to be anything by the town owner and then it's, it's really the right for the town to come in and be able to exit or charge the, the owner, that's, that is what you owe their head. So, this is pretty, pretty typical. Then charge on the taxes that they have or something?
Yep.
I just don't see in many towns easements that
We just did anything unusual for this that we would be concerned about. So, I think we would check it the same.
Yeah, it would be the same thing, right? They, if, they give an annual report, the town traditionally sends a letter out once a year and people respond to that. If they don't respond to that, then the town sends the codes officer out, he takes a look. And if the work isn't done, then town deserves the right to go in and do the work themselves on a force account basis and put it on their taxes.
And in that situation, the town, someone's got to do it itself, it's part of the
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else on the easements? I've been hearing a lot. Alright, so, we also have the document for discussion. And I think Chris, your first draft.
It is. And it just came today.
What, what we're, what we're kind of looking for, so we can if you don't mind, just quickly, as quickly as
So, I'm just going to hear. And, and it's open for discussion, I will just try and start the discussion with the concept of what is fifty five and older. Obviously, it would be a legal document, but what is, what it, what it was this board looking for, and I thought, why not mirror federal law, which is fifty five and older, essentially eighty percent of the complex will be dedicated, that each, eighty percent of the units will be dedicated to at least one person at least fifty five years old.
Let's start with that. Yeah, so I hope you wanted to say something.
Well, I, I mean, I haven't read this, so I don't know what it says. What I was concerned about, I'm, I'm fifty seven, my wife's fifty three, we have a twenty six year old son. He wants to come and move in. Is this in here to send the drugs, man?
Well, that, in my mind, it doesn't. It's implied in the sense that at least one resident has you're saying, in that situation, there won't be a one
No, it'd be
Two bedroom Two bedrooms, so, yeah, at least one person in that example, at least one person in that two bedroom would have to be if you got a boat.
I got a problem right, when you say that, because as a person who's lived now for five years in that apartment building and he was a senior citizen, there's not a single parent of three small kids. And that's eligible, because you got a fifty five year old parent, and you got three little kids. Who might be raising hell, like little kids do. I don't want them in the same place, you sold me in a senior apartment. And with it, the quiet enjoyment, I think it's a term my shoes, it's not quiet anymore. How do you deal with that? Give it to the town board. The town board will have the right to lose the percentage of units dedicated to fifty five years of age or older. Then it becomes a sort of a semi senior. At what point, at one point, where, where's the loyalty to the folks who came in off the bat? The sixty five year olds, the people who don't get, the people who have family in Brookdale. This is a very, this is a wide open door, it seems to me, Chris, that you're leaving. And that leaves the folks who came in to do the initial surveys as well. And you can't rebound with known people.
Well, it's a discussion.
Well, I can start there. I, I don't have a problem with the town board, I was just trying to get quite town side, want, they have something that's not technically viable, then that's something that's maybe safe leave or something, bro. As, as to, to the others, I can't, I don't know what this board is looking for, I, I can't, I can't envision a hundred percent. There needs to be some flexibility.
I think it's pretty typical, I mean, if we not, if this is modeled similarly to like a senior housing in HOA. I think the Fair Housing Act, there's a lot, I think there's like, I don't know, I, I feel like there's other development, maybe, I don't know, maybe about purpose, so like developments there. They do this at least eighty percent because it is part of the Fair Housing Act, but I don't know. I don't know, I don't know if you can
They all, I mean
Yeah.
That's what, that's what's said as a standard for the housing.
Right.
And knowing that there are limitations to how constrained they can be, it's what the federal law uses and it's what we use on all housing projects.
Yeah, that's my thought, I think, I think what it's missing right now is the tie in for the workforce housing.
Well, I, I thought
Based on a P U D, so I think we, I'd like to, I think we need to see that defined in here. And then what that is with the relationship with Brookdale.
Well, I also, I, I'm doing the toothpicks, I had the pod with the workforce housing. And then I got the senior house. So, I was sort of, in my mind, I was saying, okay, in that twenty percent is the workforce housing issue that has to be dealt with.
Yeah, so, I, I want to duplicate documents, but if there's a tie, that just at, at least
No, in other words, the twenty percent is part, would be, the workforce housing would be satisfied in the twenty percent.
Yeah, I forget, I forget what was on the P U D, did it give a percentage and then
It said four.
Four apartments?
And, and if I recall correctly, it said four, four apartments.
This, your comment, you can only buy it with that study, thank you. So, originally we're getting straight about this process, items they're going to be families trying to visit their loved ones, nursing homes. And we're going to have them let stay there, okay, visit. If you're in a nursing home, the possibilities are that probably they are fifty five or lower fifty five. So, only the twenty percent there is going to be dedicated for those people. When eighty percent
Doesn't, it doesn't mean that, well, the pod says in the workforce housing, part of that is involved that, of this family.
We couldn't have more than twenty percent, but we're the minimum. We're dedicating a minimum number of percentage of housing, that would be workforce housing, which would be at a AMI, a percentage of AMI rent for their lower, lower rented units at a cost. Those units that are dedicated to that workforce housing are dedicated to Brookdale family residence, so that they have a place to stay at that disruptive rate. I understand, I don't think it's a minimum, it's a maximum, it's a maximum of twenty I'm with you, I don't think it's a minimum, it's a maximum, it's a maximum of twenty percent.
No, there wasn't a percent, there's four uni- four units, where you can have to go to workforce. I think that's what it's. And I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
I was just trying to understand then, if you know, if. That the workforce housing, once for a unit. Could be the people affiliated with Brookdale.
Yes, okay. They should be, yes, absolutely.
Um. Alright, so let's start with that. And are they also people who work there? Because they do that, people who work for us. Which doesn't, and doesn't matter what the income is, so we can say, wow, this is a great thing, but people who work there live here. Creating a lot of community. Yeah. Um. So we're at the, we're at four units. Like we. Now, maybe that's not, still, what else?
Well, my, maybe I should do the other one. Has there been a study? You guys could not. On the. Potential for tents in that development? Can you fulfill? Without having changed by the board?
I I'll just try, if that that that's a distraction, distracted. I mean, I'm just trying to have a discussion, but I don't want it to be a distraction, I mean. No, I doubt, I doubt my client. Not a study, I know my client paid a significant amount of money for it properly. And it's going to have to be a construction project, to build this project. So my client has a significant risk and I assume my client is going to do with the diligence to make sure that the restrictions that they're bound by. Are going to be equally satisfied, or they're gonna have a significant amount of financial problems in the town.
I'm just. Just because I'm trying to. Get mine. I mean, we're talking about a senior housing project. Why, why aren't you just building an apartment? Is there some advantage to saying it's a fifty-five and older apartment house? Just made it an apartment though.
Well.
Then so we can get.
So I can talk to my client about that, I. I know we have a P U D that says senior housing, I get it, but you know, we're we're dancing around this issue of. Work. I think we've, I, there's been a need identified in the community that person housing. So that's the road we went down with the town.
If I can answer that, um, the reason we opted for the team. Is Law Ridge, which is right across the street, um. Much lower rents, just two-hundred-and-thirty-seven units in the complex. So there's plenty of apartments right across the street for workforce housing. What we said was, we will, because Brookdale has been so coordinated with us. And when they came to us and supported our project, they approached the subject and said. Is there any way that you could set aside some apartments for our family members, because the trailing spouse, usually ends up about twenty miles from their family. And it's a real problem commuting every day, because they're there all day. Um. So we felt like it would more benefit having people, family members. There really is catering to the workforce of four apartments, I mean. We said, we'll make available, if it's more than four, we're fine with it. And we even said, we'll allow you to go month to month. Uh, we're gonna make every reasonable combination, um, for those trailing family members. Be able to stay at our facility while they couldn't. Who care, and the the reason we're really catering to seniors. It's worth it. Tremendous financial investment project, and there is a dire need. Because in in this area, you go from basically being a property owner to assisted living. Um, or to the funeral, there is no really senior housing project that caters to fifty-five and older into arness. Um, it really isn't much different, we're really splitting hairs here. I, if someone has a grandchild. And their grandmother lives in this building. We can't stop that grandchild from coming over and peeking. Uh, but the reality from a practical sense is, when you say seniors and fifty-five and older, you just don't get young people. That they think would want you to live there, because it's really not conducive for children to live there. It has no, we're not saying they couldn't, but the reality is not even a fox.
So we talked with the town. On top of they had a need for housing. They then also tried senior. More necessary typology of housing that required in our county. Out of the twenty objects that they have on the board right now, they have one senior housing project. That's allocated for new units in this entire county, and it's this. And they've expressed the need for additional senior housing, because nobody's paying for it and they don't. So there's a high level need throughout this entire county, and you're getting the first one, and there will be others. Um, but it's it's a, it's a, an area of sector that's not being fulfilled yet.
So if, okay.
I understand, and I commend you, and I think we need it. I'm just asking, as a businessman who's invested, why are you going to be deceiving?
Well, remember though, we're we're still, there's twenty percent of the population still to live there.
Well, I'm just saying, so one of them, this kind of is the reason why we're making this. Team.
It's just, it's just supply and.
Just that, all about the. Nothing in. In the building type of ability, trying to be supportive of the climate, it's the most important, especially for the community. So the income that you get from the senior housing and the benefits you get for the tax place that we get have nothing to do with.
I don't, I don't know, I'm just, it's. There's what I'm trying to.
Trying to question.
I don't know, I'm trying to question, but. What the rest of the town board was sent, or. On economic hardship, we can look into that. It's just, it's just something.
There's, there's, there's other reasons.
That's where being cautious, nothing that we ever can, depends.
Has even given me no more suggestions. We've said to you, how many hearings, we didn't even talk about the project, talked about traffic, talked about damn sidewalks, for hours. And and the reason seniors are the lowest traffic generator in use for this project. The town should love the fact that we're targets. It's a perfect fit for this.
Isn't it? Thinking that if out of the town board gives you some of that units and. I mean, like you said, they have to come. Surely the town board, but you also don't want it sitting open because twenty percent, that twenty percent of capacity of of non-seaters. Um, including for workforce housing, that's what I, that's one of the things I want to clarify, I mean, four, or four workforce housing. Units, part of the twenty percent, or part of the eighty percent.
I I was.
Or in a, like, just.
I I.
Not part of the.
I I don't, I don't see we have. Like differentiate. It's actually.
So if you're saying like, if a a Brookdale employee wants to live in a pay not be fifty-five. In the workforce housing for a a salary number.
That counts against the clock. Um, I think one of the things we.
Right, so it's responsible. You need to communicate, the door just play itself.
Um, it's where I.
Right, I can say that I don't need it, I don't want to take that statement out when.
I don't want to give it to the town board.
I think there's a compromise. Okay, so just to understand where we are. The the town board and this this P U D. Where is here? One, yeah, we have not, we haven't talked about it. I'll say. Oh, literally, it's massive. So the, there's, there's a meeting place. It's seventy-two senior housing, but those are going to be workforce housing. Let's start with the workforce housing, okay? It has been determined that the workforce housing. Is, would be met by having. People who were, have people in a Brookdale, right?
No, it's income-based, correct? It says. It says again, satisfied.
Satisfied by.
As to whether they also have to meet the workforce housing standard.
In the beauty. Got it right here. Beautiful. Force housing, we have agreed to allocate four fully furnished units specifically. Design designated for family members of residents at the neighborhood Brookdale Alzheimer Senior Living Center of Goodwill Brookdale. Each such unit will be available to Brookdale on a short-term rental basis. With many of the same amenities afforded other residents, including housekeeping services. If such units are not utilized by Brookdale, and such units shall be made available for rent to workforce housing applicants. Workforce housing rates shall be applicable for a period of ten years following the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. So it sounds like. It's gonna first be offered to Brookdale and then fall back.
That was the intent.
Work.
And and the workforce housing.
And the number didn't change, the number of four didn't change from seventeen to a hundred-two units. Uh, and then it, just one more thing about workforce, because. The town board may reduce the number of workforce housing units required or the method for calculating the rent ceiling to be considered workforce housing. If such an adjustment is necessary to support the continued financial viability of the project. The owner shall provide information on a annual basis to the codes officer to confirm compliance with these workforce housing required.
And that's why I. Because I was here on. Fifty-five and older, we put the town board, put into the pot, so that was its purpose.
Of course, quite different. So we always got this before the meeting, as. And so, as I'm going through and listening to everybody, I do have a couple of questions or comments, and. The eighty percent jumped out at me, um, because it seemed low for a devoted, um, senior housing. What if there was then added, since this is a kind of a workshop, it's here, um, um, minimum. Like, if it, if no one eighteen or under, then. Because I do understand, we get multi-generational things going on, or temporary living situations, whatever. That resolve those concerns, if it was like. The fifty-five and over state, but then you added like no one under two.
So I I, uh, I'm too old now. So. But say my daughter goes away and my grandkids.
That that's where. Driving. Um, like, there's gotta be a way to find that, I mean.
Caregivers.
I think that it can be worked out, I think that.
We, we also don't want to create, we also don't want to create language that's gonna harm us from a federal law standpoint. Telling you to then come back to us and saying, we provided all of these additional restrictions that contradict federal law and how they they maybe. And that's gonna open us up for litigation, that's why we're trying to just mimic the standard that's defined by federal law today and just bringing it about to adhere.
Well, I'm just throwing that out there, there's. An option for thinking about it, um. Down further, notwithstanding the foregoing to the contrary, please, this is a newly constructed housing, um. They won't, the requirements won't be applicable until twenty-five percent of units are.
That's that's the federal law, well, it's gonna take us a little bit of time to get it all, we start, right?
Why would you be afraid that you wouldn't get seniors initially? Well, here's, here's the thing. Please, so this, this is modeled. After the federal law, so we're trying to, um. We have a certain proportion of this model that's under law, and that's great. I don't think we should, I don't think we should twinkle it or mess a bit, because this is not where you'd be at our last. Right, one that comes in, only like, wow, I'm sixty or no, so, okay. So we know that one person has been described this way. So this is a recommendation for discussion, obviously, it's the first time we've done this. That's why, this is not something we usually really get into a lot, but it's so, it's important, this is the first time we've done it. And we're doing it in an open meeting. So the recommendation would be for the fifty-five, for this portion of it, eighty percent, one person, fifty-five years old. And at the beginning of our project, you might have, you know, you got a mix-up, or 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 replace those on, right, so that's why the, um. Newly constructed housing. We'll reset that, now, what I, what I don't think that we're into the discussion of is the rest of the twenty percent, which is, how many units?
Twenty-one-four. Sorry, say that again.
Twenty-one-four, so it's twenty-one, twenty-one.
Is the twenty percent?
Yes. And.
I gotta say, uh, we got this a half an hour. And I can't imagine why we can.
Because we have to talk about it, we have to workshop it, we're not here to sell it. We get that.
You can't like, okay, you don't understand. Well, that's what I'm saying, you can't, no, I'm not here to explain. This is not what this meeting is for.
Okay, so we can, we can. We, we're gonna have another, we're gonna have a workshop meeting, right? Next, we're gonna, like we usually do, it's gonna come up again, but. To to try, and then we'll bring it up and we'll get comments and we'll 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 send emails, but. It's, it's hard to. Like, if even if it came up, this discussion would go, even if it was there a week ago, it's a, the discussion still has to be had verbally.
I agree.
So. You don't get to say what I'm saying, but I'm just saying, that's, this is my, this is my bag, you're right now. I I don't, and and this is for discussion, and it's no decision being made. Is that I think the thing about the peacemaker holder that's in here is federal law, I I discuss it. You know, when everyone has a chance to look to it as to why they're at the core, I think it does. Then then we'll go further.
The fifty-five.
Yes.
I think I. To Chris's point. When you or when, as I'm reading, I agree with you.
Yeah.
It's, it's my study. It's not, I don't take it as. A kid wants to come in and visit their parents and break this, because it's about who signs the lease. And if you sign with this, and somebody that's fifty-five, that meets it, whether kids come in, don't come in, that's besides it, that's not the issue. So I I don't think that we should concentrate. And I agree with you that we should. Who would be, uh, that would be with the federal definition. So that we don't go playing around with it. Problem that is that, found deficient was, I changed some stuff, oh. We've taken the federal definition, okay, then. Where it's supposed to be, and we 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 determined what, uh, what the definition means and verified ourselves and then.
Let's talk so, so learned and you've been very involved in this, um. Again, just on the one point, do you have any feedback about that going with federal law and that?
From the fair housing.
In terms of defining senior?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So now let's talk about the other twenty percent.
Hmm, okay.
Right.
We're gonna put the.
Uh, anything about. Is workforce housing. But trying to carve out of that was a separate thing that the town board agreed to, which was, and they, and that the, um. Developer agreed to is that four spaces are going to go to. The the people, the Brookdale.
Okay. That's thirty-two, we're forty percent, so that's okay.
Close now, it's not workforce, but we're gonna qualify, we're gonna. Um, these were, if they qualify, if they're, if they are. Qualified income wise or.
Or, it sounded like if they were relative of a person working there.
Relative of a resident in Brookdale. Relative.
Relative.
Living in Brookdale all time.
So they qualify your fourth table?
I have to say, I think I.
Wait, and again, on this, but because of the, where it came out of the beauty, the last meeting that was done had. A significant amount of workforce housing, and I think when it was presented to this group. And then in initial discussions with the town board, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's probably discussions that, hey, you know, we have Brookdale. They were really interested in us offering. Month to month or limited lease options to the Brookdale family members who have someone they can't live with anymore. It would be nice to be right across the street and go back and forth, uh, and so they. Probably came up with it to put it within the workforce housing, like as the, you know, circumstance, I don't know.
Only four, that's four units.
And for, so if I, if I'm a millionaire, I, person is in there, I believe that those four units, like they're for. For the community, for the convenience of this person. If.
Four units. Four units.
So necessarily, necessarily workforce housing, it's really just defining. Certain limitation of rent that you can charge, it's on eighty to a hundred percent of a person's A M, his town's A M I. Right? So the, the median income, the define of, you, you have to be within that. A M I to qualify to rent a workforce housing, that's all.
Yeah, like that defines it all, it says four to be available to resident. If, of the family of the resident. If they're not filled by those, it was.
You're.
Back to workforce. The pump, are you fit, are you?
She's, that's exactly it.
Yeah, you're right, she, Valerie Bennett. Not if they're taking out.
They are, I took them workforce there.
No, no, no. We're, we're, we're starting with twenty one units, which is twenty percent. Four of them. Ways are good at math, we're not.
Four of them, um, how?
Some bits, but those are four. Now let's talk about the other seventeen, thank you, David, so the other seventeen. Talk about that.
You're gonna have some of those other seventeen fully furnished? For the folks who are just coming into a short.
No, no, I don't think so, no, just four.
So the four for workforce housing, you're gonna have four for?
There's not workforce housing. It, that is.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, see, we offer the first.
So the rest of the seventeen are. We're beyond those in.
What is it?
No. So it's.
There's no restrictions.
Oh, no, no restriction, not work.
Those don't need to. Just say.
Fifty, no. The twenty nine, the workforce of Brookdale, this, that, this P U D is one in the same one. Those are, okay, this, yeah. Okay, those, those haven't been furnished.
So, we are planning for. Here, public diffuses.
No. I did.
I, I guess they, with the other P U D on North Bridge. There was very specific language. About how this is calculated, what the rent would be and so on and so forth. I don't think that's in this. Great, this comes like this air and all. We probably would be so.
Very similar, it says that.
I don't think they're.
Yeah, I was.
That's why, that, that might. Cut and dry. Because it's just workforce, they're not offering. It's just workforce, and in this case, they're offering it to Brookdale and the town board. And the developer has decided to put it in together as workforce housing. Yes, David.
The other difference on that side, I just completely. The. Grandpa, that is not a senior. That's not. So that's why I asked the question, what is going on here that we're looting this, the seniors and take twenty percent off of that? That's why I asked that question. Doesn't matter, if we could tie with. Have the definition. If that the twenty percent set aside with four units out of the trunk, we might be discussing for the.
Yeah, I mean, I think there, there might be a little team that is rare enough because that's what. Your Brookdale family members most likely think. I mean, more stuff, like the spouses, or an older child that is gonna stay for a month or two.
So.
So, it may be part of it.
But I mean.
There's seventeen.
Always.
Well, it's senior housing, I think it's granted, granted a man is, like, other geographical businesses have a, kind of senior housing. And. It's very common to use, they're helping that.
So twenty percent is work. It's, it's hard to say that the twenty percent were birthed out and we got those four units out. So, um, even if it's not, it's twenty percent.
There's any need for.
I don't think we necessarily need to say. I think it's it.
But.
Well, you see, a hundred and up, you don't, from selling, we felt proud of them that for. Said. Not being dedicated to senior housing. Our conversation for Brookdale have always been, and this is probably why we have a side line. Now, easy, because we made these apartments about to the family, so they've been very cooperative. It's been a give and take relationship, but we said quite honestly that we give them preferential treat, we would try to accommodate. Their family members with the workforce housing.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be very fluid and that's the, that's the. Numbers. Both are. Their family members, where do you work? Wow. Um, that's a lot to figure out and to decide when you have somebody coming in. Which category you're gonna put them in first, pretty well, I don't feel that's what maybe should be thought.
Well, well, if we, I, I, I say if, if it's eighty percent fifty five or over.
So you wanna determine which pop of how, which pop of jobs do people come out with?
Because the fourth, the four, that could be a part of the eighty percent, you, you gotta do this for the responsibility, because they're seniors who qualify to eighty.
So the four come out the top?
But it could be, um.
What needs to be revised?
I don't, I don't think so, I think what we're trying to do is implement the intent. By this, by this covenant that will be. A touchless sense.
But I also understand that the workforce, there is a limited timing.
And you. So. My only other real comment is the last, second to last bullet or item, which I know has caused some stress. I'm rolling this. Five years. That's the necessary support. Trying to provide. Project. I mean, this was sold to us from the get go as senior housing thing on the. On the need of the county saying that. Me too, we, we said town board, they'd like to see, um, that thing, so. I don't have a problem with it, but I think that it's almost too easy of a back door. It's too open ended, I think that. There might be, uh, something in here about what needs to be documented and demonstrated. In order to apply, if you will, for such a reduction, um.
Well, well, let's, let me say this. If this is a covenant, which is what, what this board decided and it's going down there and it's going to say that it, um, you know. It, the, the town board. Can literally get rid of the whole covenant.
Yeah.
For any reason.
That feels a little.
But that's, but they again.
What is that, what's your feeling, with your operating from demonstration to prior year, true or vague?
Right, what's my sense, it would all be.
I always think we want to say what it is.
Okay, well, I'm not saying that I want to do any of these things, just, I'm bringing up questions because I don't know anything about it and I'm trying to learn from it. But it's in sense.
Whatever they want to go, you know, whatever.
This houses. Like this is, so this isn't usual for us, right, you know, we look at, we look at plans, we look at very specific things.
Clearly.
This is, this is what the town board goes from.
Yeah.
Am I right? Like. So, this, um. When we come up with something this week, it, we're, we're descended to the town board, as well, make sure it does, does implement what they think it post, they send this discussion. And try to get it, you know, done so that we can finish this.
Will this be all the town board agenda?
I don't think it needs to be the town board agenda.
I'm just curious, because watch and listen and learn from how.
I hear, I play, I'm not sure what that's gonna be, you're looking.
Oh.
It's your.
Yeah. So. Where, what, what this board. Wants to do is to implement. The pot. Right, and, and this happens to be one of the things, um, we thought that was, that was needed for our situation, and that's what we're trying to.
I think, and it needs to be recorded.
Yes.
So that future owners know what their obligations are.
Right.
Yeah.
And then it's enforceable by the town.
It's also kind of connected, and we do what we've done with other. Documents like this where. In one sense they're common. I don't know about to you.
Yeah, and then you, and then you put together a new draft that we then.
I don't know if we'd have to come back if we wanna all discuss it again, or if we started that to the town board, but do you want to go down this sort of process?
We understand kind of where we are or what, what.
I, I do. Just, obviously it's gonna be a reportable instrument, it will have much more to it than it's this, but this is the. Foundation for which that document is based, so. That's why it's just a little snipper.
So.
But it's an importance.
If we, we're trying to move first, we see them possibly move in that meeting, if we have the, if we have the guts of this. Chris and I make it a, you know, a solicitor, you know, that, that we do that often. The guts of it, I'm fine with, until we get to, we find it's about. Twenty percent is anywhere else, four units with family, right, we just, I think that's where we are, clarify that second. But it's just. No.
Would you, how would you feel about taking the things that you found all those paths about tonight and updating this and then circulating it?
Um, yeah, I'll talk, I'll talk to Chris about some of the language, make sure we all understand the same thing, and I think we are.
Is the board concerned that we're not gonna need the known? So.
No.
And be forced to rent to people under fifty five? Cause our research says just the opposite, that it'll be nine months. Uh, will be way over the, but that's really not even issue.
Well.
As far as you can, I'm glad, you'll know, but. I. But. They're not leased. Doesn't matter.
Like no stake in it, like this board. It's.
We don't have.
No, no stake in it, it's only, there's words that are in the, the, um. Maybe next time we'll, do something different the way we tend to, but, but it will actually put this right in. So we're, if they came to us and I'm like, well, I'm not implementing, right, so that's all that we're doing. And, and to understand. The manner in which it's implemented, I think we agree about that, about the federal law that gave you, and then the twenty percent. I'm still not entirely certain. How I would say those words, so we'll make a discussion about it. And get it to you guys in the middle, right? And. I, again, that it came in this format. I'm not sure how else we would have done it, because any way you look at it would have to be discussed tonight, you know. In a, in a pretty robust way, like.
Yeah, I don't wanna get distracted by the rules of our document. That is really the purpose of that document, is this, this piece right here.
Yeah, and those board, they, they understand, we do agreements like that.
Well, we're trying to, like you said, we're trying to keep this moving, so we may not. This may take a little bit of time. Though we may not add it. On Friday, when everything, when Lisa sends everything out, so just kind of be cognizant and understanding of that, please.
If we get the guts of it. We can do the seeker or we can do the approval, and I'm worried about the.
Legal.
Yeah, then it'd be subject to, you know, legal review.
I'm having discussions like this where we are given something before the meeting to discuss, kind of in a workshop type setting, when it's something.
It's just terribly unusual.
But, this is not same as being given a new set of drawings. Right before the meeting, the thing, we would like you to consider approving this, like they're very different things, and I think to bring this up and say, let's. Just kind of talk through it a little bit, is definitely different, so.
Yeah, this is.
And it's something that we asked for that wasn't part of the original submission, and it's just something that has evolved, so. It, it was good to have discussion about it. Okay, I haven't started off with that.
We'll use your.
If you can go there and. Well, I can hear you. Oh. Didn't hear him say. General. Office, um, you get this one third and perhaps it's it and so you determine against the family, somebody.
I don't think it's a bad idea to consider, because I think there's a lot, like if you put a. But if you have a limit, that no one under eighteen, it actually becomes more appealing to the people who you're targeting. Now Jamie's gonna like. They can, we, hopefully their grandkids. They'll come and say, but having. Come stay for a week or two at the outside is not the same as. And some old people might really like to have the young kids around. And some old people might really like to have the young kids around. Well, in some, some places. And, all right, are there any other questions or comments for Hybridge?
Otherwise, I mean, we're, we are, does everyone agree that the project itself, what we have. The easements, which I sent small cabinet on. That it's, that it looks like it's ready to go to a seeker and a final. Anything else, patience is.
Okay.
We take whatever we decide and we take that off the drawings, you know, the last meeting, we talked about putting. Who's in, you know, who qualifies for these units, it was asked with us to put it on the drawings, did we keep that separate?
Whether that was the.
Here and then on the.
Yeah, no, it's simply.
Chris will work on it harder than I.
All right. People are staying, that's it.
All right, um, so the next item on the agenda is for the Woodland Hill subdivision. Um, hopefully development on the agenda for updated discussion only. Um, and this is class map number one zero four point dash zero one dash thirty-nine point two. Um, so. I think I'd like to start this similarly to the last item, um. And start with Doug's memo, Doug, you already did that?
Sure.
Okay, um. And they've received, the applicant received your memo for. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so if Doug can go through his items, he, these are very detailed, but I think. We need, these are some dotted I's and cross T's that need to happen, Scott.
You know, we put together a rough draft with, uh, debris and our, our engineer and Tom Douglas. And Chris is saying for the first time that we, we do have responses though.
Okay, Doug, do you want to start, if you want them to give the responses, how would you rather?
I mean, what, what, once again, right, I mean, we're getting this. At the meeting, right, so. So I, I mean, I mean, I. Jamie and I spoken with Chris and, you know, we just said that, you know, we, we've, we've looked at the drawings. The SWIP and everything else, and it just really needs to be. Mopped up, right, so I mean. I don't know what to tell you.
Doug, if you want, I could just.
There, there are things in here, Scott, that, that. I mean, the dates and the drawings are wrong, right, I mean. That, that, there's stuff in the SWIP that's totally outdated, right, I mean, it's just, it just needs to be cleaned up, right, I mean, we've talked and we've talked. Right, and when we talked to Chris last week, he said, everything's fine, so, you know, I came in here and I spent a full day going through. Box after box after box of drawings and, you know, I mean, you know, technically, we're, we're right at the doorstep. To approve this, but. You know, there's just, there's just things in here that they, they don't even make sense, Scott, I mean, cause it's, it's the old drawings, right, I mean, so. You know, I beg you, go and look at this and clean everything up and give us one submittal. That the board can look at and say, yes, everything's here and everything's done, right, I mean.
Could I just pause a minute?
I'll go through it for the board, okay?
For Doug said is entirely factual, based on these two pages.
I don't wanna hear. There are four items. It's at a meeting, we haven't seen it, our engineer hasn't seen it, he can't give us feedback, I don't wanna hear it.
Okay, Doug, do you still want to speak or?
Yeah, I mean. We're not digging through this piece from this date and our document center is crazy. There's so many different dates and documents and it's very confusing. The full front and we've been told that we're not getting a new submission, that we got it back in April, but there's been. Other pieces and Doug's got a whole two-page list of what's not accurate, so.
I'm tuning the S for now, February twenty-fourth.
Yeah, so I, I'm speaking for the board and if anybody did agrees, I think it would be moving you to submit. A fully clean and accurate set that we can review in ample time. To be able to inform the seeker. And a decision on further. I'm not sure the board is going to want to move forward with seeker and decisions if we don't have something accurate. To review, so Scott might save you time to not even bother going over it, just incorporate it into the drawings. And the Doug.
I agree wholeheartedly with what you said about seventy-five, eighty percent of the comments, but there's three or four comments.
The end question.
Just clarifications and if you'd rather Doug do this offline, you could do that, but there's a couple of things we need clarification on.
Yeah.
That I would like to talk to you about and not guess on.
Okay, okay, but you wanna call me tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's forming, and I, yeah.
And I know Vincent's pretty well involved with it, so maybe Vincent could call.
When you say Scott, we have a whole team, players, please, I'd like to just hear me out.
We got this, the general, I guess, for the first with the board, and then you felt and have a discussion with Doug. And I'd like to hear it and I'd like to have it on the record for those people who might be watching the meeting who aren't interested in what's going on. But I'd also like them to have the opportunity to read his review of all of these items, so that. We're hearing it from him, we are all hearing it together, and again, everybody who might be watching this is also able to hear it. Because if all these things are happening in close conversations, I think that's great to get things done sometimes, but there's. Some breakdown here and we need to all get right back together so we can get them.
I totally agree, and seven, you know, I think with the, of the two pages, seventy-five percent. Those are things that need to be cleaned up, but there's two or three items that I'd like to talk to you. Um, thought about tomorrow just to tighten up and it'll totally be an update.
Yeah, no, yeah, you don't need to go through a little.
This is my engineer's response. The traffic letter dated April thirty, two thousand twenty-five submitted to town on April thirty, two twenty, two thousand twenty-five references the traffic report from. October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, revised on August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. This report indicates that there will, there have been no significant changes in traffic patterns since that study. Recent traffic counts conducted on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five show that traffic volumes have remained stable or decreased. Confirming the soundness of the previous stat, the two thousand seventeen nineteen traffic report. Continues to be applicable to concurrent project, because a similar project was analyzed at the same location. Furthermore, the earlier report was more conservative as, as it included the analysis of five additional. What we did to traffic were less. This consistency and conservative nature of the previous report substantiated that traffic conditions remain unchanged. And that the existing data accurately reflect current conditions, so we're asking that the board accept. Of the traffic cams that we did to update the older piece of that.
I think that's a question for the board, we plan to go around and just see. Moves okay with accepting the previous test that is moved like. And a fully updated article study, I also think we need the right. Yeah, that's my, well, that, well, the reference is, everybody saw there was a recommendation from Doug correct. To have an updated traffic study, so that's one of Doug's, can we, can we read those? Maybe just simple comment, like, comment for comment, but I think important. And here, and we should, will you read your comment, Doug, on the traffic?
This.
This is.
This is not, in my mind, this isn't problem. You have somebody that says something and we need it. And now we're looking at Doug to give us his thoughts on.
He's, he's gave us this.
It, it talks about.
Day is December third. Yeah. Doug, can you, can you read your, your comment?
Get it in the traffic report, many instances references previous projects dating back to two thousand seventeen. The planning board may find it prudent to request a new and complete traffic report to the current project.
We're saying, we did a traffic report, it's converted to twenty-five. From a traffic engineer. That is saying. We don't, we believe the traffic counts have been given.
Didn't help the fiscal count, and the traffic was less than it was in two thousand seventeen. So we feel like it's not necessary for us to spend another two thousand dollars. To start to state the obvious, there is no traffic issue, if the count is down. And it wasn't an issue in two thousand seventeen with more houses, how could it be an issue in two thousand twenty-five?
And, and from my perspective, I understand what you're saying, okay, I wanna hear from my pound engineer. If he says you're right and we shouldn't do it, okay, that's fine, but. We're putting him on the spot.
Yes, and I think, I agree, I, I think you hear your comment. We will take it under advice now. Okay, here's number one, number two.
See, y'all. Item one. H, we talked about. Uh, air mitigation systems. Our responses, links my engineer, RZ states that air monitoring is not required near state outside of New York City. Which was stated in the older plan, it was concerned for a lot of different environmental conditions. So we don't think it's warranted, we could either remove it from the plans, Doug, or we could put some nomenclature there. Um, for dusty, arid conditions, we'll put one in, but we, but air monitoring. Systems are, are not typically part of those rules. I'm pointing the best three years and none of them have air monitoring.
All right, similar to, together we'll take it under advice.
The other end, I think, we'll just update. Doug, if you're talking to. And in fairness to everybody, the richest point that I've heard, the person who. We have to check this out. Um, so. I think we would like to be, I mean, not be considered for the October sixth meeting. So we have another place, but it's all two weeks to go back and forth, but Doug fully addressed this, so a full update will send to everybody, so.
We can't meet the twenty.
In there, yeah, the twenty, in two days, I don't want it free. I, I wanna call it that.
Yeah, okay, the, the final fact. But, but my re- my recommendation to the board, and it's your decision, right? I mean, if, if I had to sit in front of the pack through all kinds of drawings, I think it's, I mean, you. I mean, you, you guys can make up your own decision, but. It, it may go who do the whole, whole, part of the update.
So. They're gonna wanna look at the, the new drawings on the drawing time, September twenty-fourth. But I want, you know, like, every time we need somebody, or we get the new staff, those will be our head. That'll be a set that we can have in all kinds of.
Final complete set or something like that.
Yeah.
So we don't want to. Try to figure out what's the one.
Yes.
Final set.
I would say. Maybe give it in by twenty-second or the twenty-third of September, and then if it's missing like. The D E C jurisdiction line or something like that, we can do it, then.
Yeah.
Just to give more time on the batch.
This part, right, me, look. Hello, from a technical perspective. Project that's ninety-nine, ninety-nine percentile, right? It, it's, it's, it's pretty complete, but the, the problem is. You have to hunt and peck through everything, it's just little things like, you know, the report was, you know, the signatures from Tom and Rudy. Are dated prior to the date on the report. Right, so there's a lot of that that we've talked with. Chris and Vincent about the last six months. Absolutely, absolutely.
One more question. Question regarding the planting and screening. Um, in fairness to everybody involved, we had a lot of discussion about screening, and I, I think where we landed. On the plans is we put ever, we put evergreens on. Uh, I think three or four lots, that was our solution, Doug was asking about it, so, so Erin.
The ones up, up at the entrance or the ones down along the south?
We're putting in both places. Four or five evergreens on three or four lots to, to strike a balance between like the comments we heard, we heard a lot of area. Didn't get consistent comments, never had a ton of flow group, I don't know if it'd be acceptable, typically on subdivisions. We leave that up to the discretion of the homeowners, but in this particular project, you know, we have. We got a lot of concerns with the neighbors, so we put, you know, that, um. On our planting plan, at the expense of our developer, we put in, I think it's fifteen or so evergreens, so I. That was something Doug couldn't answer and I couldn't answer because it was a little.
There's the level of impact you wanna have, right? But in a. Bob, the little, Robert, that's the one there, or, or screws and all of the screening. Um, but there's a lot of other ways to kind of take it to the next level of using a mixture of different species. Rather than a monoculture or looking at things that provide, you know, more of a transition hydro type clearance between. The areas to kind of mimic what. Both are acceptable. Right, so I'm hearing one thing from the neighbors and knowing. What would best, but also knowing that this is a project that comes to get built, it includes an apartment. So, you know, I, I see both ways.
This was a wagon or a drugstore or a school, and we were building edge, I'd love to build, we were a constructive people. A very, very well sized, diverse landscape, but when the homeowner comes in. I understand the community, but the homeowner coming in, he also wants to screen the neighbor, and he also wants to have input, and I, we don't wanna put too much. Uh, rigidity or non flexibility into those homes to make them detrimental to purchasing, why not?
The, the screening actually almost is a betterment of the buyer than the surrounding homeowners, because. Over on the south side, a lot of it is, I thought Scott's speaking to, that's pretty heavily wooded right now. So, like, some of the residents aren't even gonna see these homes, because there is so much mature, um, uh, plans.
So I think maybe, maybe she misunderstood. What we had talked about when we had the workshop was that lot seventeen was gonna be dedicated to the tenant. And that you would screen those properties on lot seventeen, right, and everybody was in a, in agreement with that, that you would. You would put the screening there, the town, the town would take over that lot, so when I went through the drawings.
Yeah.
Right, and I'm not sure the drawings were the right date, because they were dated January twenty twenty-four. There was no screening shown on any of lot seventeen.
Okay.
Right, and when the supervisor was at our meeting, right, who said that was one of the reasons that we might want to dedicate that lot to the town. So that. The developer could put. The screening there, right?
That's part of the base.
Because the public, the public input, right, from those contingent homeowners was, yes, that's something we would like to see. And then. The supervisor said if that lot were taken over, then the town. Would be able to maintain the trees and keep them in place that way they were on the original drawings. Right, but 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 the drawings that I saw, there was zero plantings on the. Maybe. But those of you that were at that workshop.
Yeah.
Do you agree that's what we talked about?
Speaking.
But the lot, whatever the lot is, it's gonna be dedicated.
I thought we were talking about.
But that's top. That is it.
That is.
That is.
Yeah, that is that.
So we had every. Over.
Next to Davis.
Yeah.
So I I I didn't see it on the set that was. On the twenty twenty-four set. But but maybe there's another set out there, right, because.
No, no, no.
Because the twenty, what what Lisa had timestamp. January twenty twenty-five is actually a set of drawings that was developed. In January of twenty twenty-four. So there's a year lapse there. Right, so I I don't know if those were the right sets, or it was just the wrong date. And there were, there were no, there was no revision block, so it was hard, it was hard to track it, right, so. It was just a a set of drawings that said. January one, twenty twenty-four, but they were stamped in, but January second. And then another set came in. It was stamped January sixth.
How about this, I said, I said, four questions. How about we just scrub all the revision days off, and we give you one new date from. So it's dead, it's leaning, all right, leaning sets, everything in one day.
Oh, that's fine.
We all disagree.
Oh, I'm.